Good evening, everybody. I'd like to begin the regular meeting of the Town of Foxborough School Committee. Tonight, January 26, 2015. I want to thank members of the committee and especially our support group, Mike Everson on Foxborough Cable, Frank Mortimer from The Reporter, and Janet Gracia from the Superintendent and School Committee Office for being here on a snowy night. And never let it be said that the Foxborough School Committee is not hardy.
That's right. New Englanders.
New Englanders. In all seriousness, we're going to move as expeditiously, but I think, you know, we should be thorough as we can tonight to get through some topics that needed to be discussed and decided this month. So that's why, in case anyone's wondering why we're out in the storm, that's why we thought it was important. Debbie and I watched the forecast closely and made a joint decision to still have the meeting. So thank you to everybody for getting here. Want to say hello to Mrs. Lord, who is back home recovering. I know she's watching and here in spirit. I think I can hear her voting from the distance. Bevy, glad that you're back and will. Tonight's agenda, we're going to amend it. I'll read what was publicly posted, but Debbie and I agreed to amend it for sake of time. I don't think we have any visitors. We will approve minutes. We're going to skip teaching and learning highlights tonight. Are we going to do our mass preparatory program for international students? We're then going to quickly look at the proposed 2015-2016 Foxborough High School Program of Studies, which I know only has a couple changes. I know important to the public and to us is then the approval of the 2015-2016 school calendar, which was one of the items we felt important to still convene tonight to discuss. We will vote our recommendation on the full year 16 budget, public hearing, and vote of recommendation. Not expecting too many members of the public here tonight for that, but we'll vote our recommendation. As we will with the capital improvement plan. Get a quick FY '15 budget update if Mr. Yuchna wants to make one.
We may have not brought those handouts because we thought that is one thing. If we were to try to validate this.
Off the agenda?
That can wait till next meeting.
Thank you. And report card?
No, we also decided could make.
All right. So we will cover the 2015 district report card at a future meeting.
Yes.
Donation?
We're going to wait.
Not tonight?
We're going to wait on all those things, trying to pare us down on a stormy night.
And I know we have a couple of other matters, one of which is very important, I think, that the public know about, so that'll keep their interest, I'm sure, on a snowy night to stay tuned in. So, no visitors unless Mr. Mortimer wishes to address the group.
It's just my pleasure to be here with you.
Thank you, hardy New Englander.
It's not what you said off-camera a minute ago. Okay, minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January 5.
I didn't see anything that I had to comment on, so if nobody else does, I'd like to motion that we accept them as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero. Thank you. Massachusetts Preparatory Program for International Students. Ms. Spinelli.
Yes, so you will see that you have at your table tonight's PowerPoint presentation, which the public will be able to see at home as well. And in your packet, there was some information and some marketing materials for the program that I thought might be of interest as well. So, for us, we're calling this our International Student Program. And that means that it's the beginning of what we're going to do with global education. It's certainly a big piece. And so, Mr. Yuchna, if you could just advance us to the next slide. So, just to give you a little bit of context, this is a short PowerPoint. I just wanted to announce that ahead of time. So, the context is this. Our strategic plan, which was voted by this committee last spring, really included a new emphasis that the data and the people on the Strategic Planning Committee felt very strongly about, which was to expand our opportunities for global connectivity of various kinds. So, that objective one of our Foxborough Public Schools Strategic Plan, which governs 2014 to '17, so we're already into 2015, states to continue to offer dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that promote critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration, and that foster high levels of achievement for all students by preparing them to be responsible global citizens. So that idea of how do we help prepare our students to be global citizens really begins with how much exposure do we give them to global experiences, global education, students from other countries? So, one specific strategy identified under that objective specifically states, increase opportunities at all level for students and faculty to participate in global learning experiences. So this is definitely a worthy challenge, but as the committee can probably appreciate, it's not simple. So, we started after, once the strategic plan was approved, we started last summer talking, especially at the high school level, with our older students. What does that mean? Global connections, participate in global learning experiences? So one of the things we have been interested in and have since pursued, go to the next slide, is our participation in a global education program that brings international students here. So, there are a couple that do this, and we have investigated a few of them, starting a few years ago, actually. And the one that really interests us the most, that we have had several meetings with, is the Massachusetts Preparatory Program. And that is through Cambridge Education. I know that when we had the MAS-C, the School Committee Conference, back in the fall, I know that Tina and Bevy and we had a chance to talk about it a little bit, but you actually visited the global education, this outfit, to talk and learn more specifically about it. So, the Massachusetts Preparatory Program is run by the Cambridge Institute. And the goal of this program is to increase the participation of international students in American, public, and private high schools, and also to enhance the profile of American education, you know, across the world. And their motto is "Expanding Human Perspective and World Harmony Through Education." And that motto, I think, one thing, really spoke to us. So that was definitely a compelling reason for us to participate in this particular program, is that's what we want for our students, to expand their perspective and to, and with the goal that the more understanding there is across the world, and that they appreciate that, they'll be more prepared for what's ahead of them, college, career, in the workplace. They might do something that's more international in nature. Almost every company nowadays has, or I will say, vast majority have some type of global connection, either through manufacturing or something. So, to the next slide. Why is this a good opportunity for us? So I put together three different ways that this is a good opportunity for Foxborough. And please stop me when you have questions. I know I'm, I know I'm in the interest of time. I don't want to be rushing. So what does it do for our students? Definitely builds cultural understanding. So think about bringing international students here. And the students associated with this program are pretty much from China. They could be from South America, however. And occasionally, you may get one from another Asian country other than China. But the vast majority right now are coming from China into the public high schools in Massachusetts. So it'll build their cultural understanding, expand global perspective and their understanding of world issues, promote greater interest in world languages, foster personal connections with international students. It will increase diversity and prepare students for college and career. I think I've already mentioned that. How does it benefit our families? And you might be surprised to see this on the slide, but there are families who are interested in helping their children get a more global experience, to prepare them for the world ahead of them beyond, you know, our little town of Foxborough. This program does involve host families. So the company will be working with Foxborough to establish host families. They call it the Homestay Program. They do have a branch of their company. So Cambridge Institute is the umbrella company, Cambridge Institute for International Education. They work with, it's called CF Homestay, GP, sorry, GP Homestay, which is a side, which is a partner company. And they work to select, interview, and screen host families. So it's not, I don't want people to worry that it's just a local decision that we make. They're definitely screened, then to go federal screening. So this is a pretty serious process. But that is all coordinated by the GP Homestay sister company to Cambridge Education. The host families would provide a bedroom, two meals a day, that would be breakfast and dinner, transportation, and a nurturing home environment for the international student. The host families are paid to provide this nurturing environment. So the current rate that Cambridge Education and the Mass Preparatory Program pays is a monthly stipend of $1,000, a total of $10,000 for a 10-month United States educational experience. And the host, oh, I already said that they're screened. So we're only looking to bring a small number of students here in the first year, and we really have to get going now because there's a lot of work that has to be done to become a district that is eligible for accepting international students. And to work with them, you can imagine the logistics that are involved. So that's one of the reasons I didn't want to put this off to another school committee member, so that we could get going. We're looking to only bring up to five students in the first year. So we're going to start really, really small and sort of see how this works for us. How does it benefit our district? The local school district, and in addition to, it's helping us meet our goal through the strategic plan and through the high school principal's own high school goals, which is global education, one of which is global education. It's helping us achieve that. But in, beyond that, that is the main benefit. Beyond that, our local school district, working with Cambridge Institute, sets its own tuition rate for international students. So, I don't know what that tuition rate will be because it depends on our marketing materials and what they think would be the draw. So I'm not even going to give a range, but it's in the range of our per pupil expenditure. But, not exactly, but it's in that range. So we set a tuition rate that we agree upon, and the families of the international students pay the tuition directly to the school district. All right. So this is just a little bit of background on the Cambridge Institute. It was founded in 2009. Its corporate headquarters are in Waltham. We also liked that they were a local company out of Massachusetts. They have 10 locations in four countries. They are one of the fastest-growing companies in the United States. Those are the two sister companies. I explained GP Homestay, Knowledge Link, actually, once we get involved with this program through the Homestay Program, Knowledge Link actually provides short-term cultural exchanges and experiences that, you know, could be, that are our choice. So other types of global experiences, that it could be other students coming from other companies for only a week to experience a little glimpse of education, that's what that sister company does. They currently have over 250 public and private partner schools in 39 states. Massachusetts only has roughly 2021 partner school districts now, and they really only want 22. So we actually will be the last public school district, public or private high school, that they are partnering with because the capacity and the marketing and all of that, that's pretty much where they want to cap. So I just spoke to them today. We are actually the last district they're looking to partner with, which is great. They place more than 2,000 international students annually. And if you go to the next slide, another reason that we preferred this company is that there are two retired superintendents of local districts. So Dr. Jack Phelan, who's actually in the picture, is the former superintendent of schools, long-serving in Hopkinton, Massachusetts. He's our main contact person. I know Jack very well. And Bob McGuire, who's the retired superintendent, long-serving, from Medfield, Massachusetts. So these two retired superintendents are the leadership team at Cambridge Institute for International Education. And they both, as superintendents, many years ago, brought this program to their high schools. So they have personal experience with receiving international students through Cambridge Institute. And they were one of, they were two of the first public school superintendents in Massachusetts to bring them here. And the students would come on F-1 visas, which limits them to one year of an American education. So it's not a four-year commitment by host families, it's a one-year commitment. So that also gave us confidence in this program over some others where we don't have known people with a track record working with this company. So what would Cambridge Institute do for our school district? They would help us achieve SEVIS certification, which is, you have to be certified to receive international students on F-1 visas. They would help match local families with students, provide ongoing program and host family support. This is, was also important to us, so I list this as the third most important reason. So they have a key person from their company that will, that is the main touch point for the academic progress of those students. The company, the Mass Preparatory Program, provides academic tutoring for those students. We don't. So they provide all of the supports that will be needed. The GP Homestay aspect is a key point person for Foxborough that will have continued ongoing communication with the host families. So they actually do all of the supports around the families. We just are responsible for their education when they come to school. They will help us create additional pathways for global school partnerships, which includes possible short-term exchanges and student educational travel. And obviously, it generates revenue for us. Our next steps are to sign a contract with them, apply for the SEVIS certification, and they will send somebody out to help us get going, although Diana Mize Pakle is familiar with that from her former employment, and so she's actually already gotten started with that. They will work with us on marketing materials, begin the recruitment when we're ready, and that is only after the marketing materials and all the other logistics are set up. And then our personal goal is to involve, enroll up to five. Maybe fewer than five, but it wouldn't be more than five. So that is the road we have been down in the last several months to help meet our goals and strategies on the strategic plan. We don't want to treat that lightly, but it does take some serious work to do it. So, questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it's an exciting opportunity. I did think so back in November, when we met Dr. Phelan at the mass conference. And I mean, I think it's great. I mean, I'm understanding that this isn't going to cost Foxborough Public Schools any money. It's an opportunity for us.
Yes, but it will cost, in the next six months, it will cost because you have to apply for SEVIS certification, which includes federal background checking. So there is that one-time cost to become SEVIS certified, which most school districts now are because they have some component of international education going and they would need to be. So, again, we're not on the forefront. Most high schools in the South Shore have international students or do something with, on that, on that nature. So yes, there is an initial cost to become SEVIS certified, and Bill and I have talked about that, that we, how we would go about paying for that in this first year.
How much is it? Do we know?
It's a little over $20,000. So we have, I'm going to use the word cobble together because that's probably what it will end up being here and there. But this is to put us in good stead. So if you think forward, it would, it would cover the, if we get two students, we would recoup that cost. If we get two students in the first year, we'd recoup that cost immediately.
Is that like a one-time cost?
Yes.
So there wouldn't be any additional?
No. Well, I'm going to say, not that I know of now. I'm not sure if there's ongoing, you know, a lot of these certification things might have an ongoing membership. I'm really, I'm not, it's a very complex process. They were actually supposed to come tomorrow to explain a little bit more detail, but now with the storm, we won't be seeing them until Monday or possibly Tuesday, but we're trying to work on a time for Monday. So I would have known that if today hadn't been a storm day, because that was one of my questions, but I never got to connect with those people.
So you're not looking for a vote?
Well, I think, I think.
Have to spend the money.
I think whether you call, I think a vote is nice. I think, not nice, it's more than nice. I think a vote is important because it is part of our strategic plan.
Bless you.
Bless you. And it is something that is new. It is costly, it is initially costly, but it's important. It's big. We've never had international students here. So I think this is something, as I said to Tina and Debbie at the conference, I think this is something that we can do together. So I like this idea because it's something we're going to work on and provide, and we're not just saying to the high school, you know, hurry up and get your global education and your global connectivity going. Because that's, that's not what we were about, and that's not how we operate. So I think this is something that, between the administration and the committee, this is something we can do together. So I would certainly appreciate the vote of support because I do think this is a collective effort, if anything ever is.
Tina?
I also think working, worth pointing out in the marketing materials is why Massachusetts school districts are highly competitive in getting the global students, attracting global students.
Yes.
So maybe you want to speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Would you like to?
Well, I thought you could do that.
So in the marketing materials, in your packet, I specifically labeled them, you know, the first is information for school districts, and then the second part is marketing materials to recruit the students. And in that, so this is part of the marketing materials that go to the other countries, student and families in the other countries. And you can see that what they're touting really is that Massachusetts has one of the most robust public education systems, including higher education, in the country. So they view Massachusetts as a destination that foreign students should want to come here. American education has its beginnings in Massachusetts. We have the oldest existing school in the United States and the oldest institution of higher learning in the U.S., which is Harvard. So they also talk about Science and Engineering Readiness Index, which Massachusetts is at the top of the states. And they give an example of the top five and where Massachusetts stands. And the fact that Greater Boston is home to over 100 colleges and universities is definitely a selling point because some of these students want to come for just a year of an American experience and to become familiar with the culture and all of that. But many of them are coming with the hopes of getting into an American college or university. So the fact that they will go to Massachusetts is a big drawing point because we're the hub of higher education, if you will. And it lists many of the national universities that are in the top 50. Massachusetts has seven of them, and three in the top 10 of liberal arts colleges. So this is of great interest to students, particularly in the Asian market, because they want to get into those colleges and universities. And then they have an example of the schedule because they don't, they're not that familiar with the American education system. And they do have three options for students. It could be the college preparatory track, it could be the English language preparatory track, where their goal is to become more fluent, and then there's a diploma preparatory program. So we actually have a lot of leeway in terms of which students we would like to mark, point our marketing to. And we probably wouldn't market towards the students who want to improve their English because we don't have a huge English language learner program here, so we actually don't have the courses for them to come and enroll in. But we would certainly be interested in taking students who are on the college preparatory track and those who want a diploma. So they would come for their senior year, the majority do come for their senior year and get a diploma.
Other comments or questions, Steve?
What is the liability for the district if something happens? Are we covered by that under like our, and I'm sure you've researched this in all the due diligence that you've done, and that will come out, but that was one of my questions. Also, discipline issues, health checks, and how much of our faculty's time, if any, will be taken collaborating with the tutors?
Okay. Can you give those to me one at a time?
Sure. Is there any liability that we have to cover for the school district?
Okay.
At all?
So, any student that we enroll, regardless of where they're from, any student that we enroll is covered because they are a legally enrolled student. That being said, when I meet with the people from Cambridge Education next week and look at how the contract goes, I'm sure there is more beyond that.
Right.
So I would say that they're probably double-covered. But that's my guess, but I will know more when I see that.
Right. Okay. And then I asked about, what if there's discipline issues and goodness me.
They're a high school, they're a high school student.
Okay.
They're, anyone who's here is here, and they're all obligated to follow the same rules and codes of conduct.
Including academic standing.
Academic standing, everything is the same.
And then, my wife did this. My wife worked with World Teach through a college, and she was in Thailand for a couple of years and went through an extensive health check.
Yes.
I imagine that part will be covered by, you know, Cambridge or its umbrella organizations.
That is all covered by Cambridge. They actually vet all the students.
Yeah.
And we have an opportunity, though, to interview the students and get all their materials.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So that is all controlled. But so the students, we are marketing our educational experience, and then the company turns around and markets it to the families, international families. And then they apply, and we have a right to look at their profile and decide.
Okay.
So they are interviewed.
Thank you. And my last one was, will any of our faculty be required, or if they are, will we monitor how much collaboration they do with the tutors under the Cambridge umbrella for our students?
That's a good question. These students will enroll in our classes like any student would. The academic tutoring is strictly the purview of the Cambridge Education. Now, that being said, our teachers are good at communicating with anybody. There's private tutors that exist with Foxborough families, and they communicate with them. So it's really no different, except this is, this will be more intensely monitored on behalf of the company.
Thanks, Deb. That's what I have, and I know you've done a lot of work in coming up to this meeting. So thanks very much for all your work.
Katie?
You mentioned those two former superintendents.
Yes.
Have we talked to other districts?
Yes.
About what their experience has been, and has there been any?
No, their experience has been extremely positive. And I think because of the confidence we have in the Cambridge Institute vetting everyone involved and how much support they bring to it. So if you, if you think about it, if you can imagine how this actually happens, so the host, the family of origin is not only paying the tuition here, they're also paying that company for all the support that's provided. So our tuition here is not the only fee that they pay. So there's a lot of oversight. Everyone has had great experience with the oversight. The program was at least 10 years in these districts with these superintendents, so it wasn't just a one-time thing before they retired. It's a longstanding program that I have always been interested in, and I have a lot of confidence in this company. In fact, Dr. Phelan said, he's traveling this week, but he said he'd be very willing to come back at another meeting, once we get started, to answer any questions you have about his experience. He just couldn't be here tonight. But he would be more than happy, once we get rolling, or even a month from now, to come back at the late February meeting and just, and talk a little bit more about the program if the committee would like that.
Any other comments?
Hey, I just have one more question. What would be the length of the contract that you're going to sign with the Cambridge Institute?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah, I just wondered.
I don't know.
You would assume it's an annual basis, but who knows, right?
One would assume, but I guess I shouldn't assume. I don't know. Because once we have that, we're not guaranteed to bring a certain number of students or accept a number of students. We may, we may only have three the first year. I'm not really sure. We already talked a little bit about marketing, but I would say some of the unique things that we have, that are strengths, like our arts programs, would be of great interest because some of, that is actually what a lot of the international students are looking for because in their country, there may not be an emphasis on the arts, and they really want that experience. So I really think that we have, we will have some strong marketing materials. I really do.
I agree with you, especially having read the district report card that was in tonight's packet as well. I think so. I just was curious about the length of the contract terms.
I don't know. That's a really, that's a really good question. I don't know.
I would, I would think it would be on an annual basis, like Bruce said, so that you could evaluate how the experience went, but I guess you'll find out and let us know.
Katie?
It would sound like Steve, with any contract, are we going to have, I hope you don't mind that I said that.
No.
You mean it as a compliment, I'm sure.
I'm flattered.
You know, a contract, meaning legally binding, are we going to have our attorney review?
Yes. I mean, we do sign contracts all the time, so we're pretty used to reading them. I just didn't ask for one ahead of time because I want the consensus support and the vote of the school committee, and then didn't want to go too far ahead with, without that.
I mean, I think it sounds like a great idea. Again, just want to make sure legally we're protected.
Yes. No, I agree.
For lack of a better word.
And I appreciate the superintendent's commitment to try to make our community exposed to its culturally diverse environment because we certainly know that's what our kids are going to grow up in. So I would entertain a motion to give the superintendent approval to enter into contract with these folks based on her description and also her judgment, if that sounds okay to everybody.
I'd second it. I'll second that.
You want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, and Steve can second it.
All right. So the motion is to approve the superintendent's moving into contract with these folks, subject to her discretion and judgment?
The Cambridge Institute of International Education.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero.
Thank you so much. I can't wait to get started.
I suspect this is one Mrs. Lord is probably five-zero, so.
Oh, I'm sure. She's got two hands up right now if she's watching at home.
Moving right along, the proposed new year Foxborough High School Program of Studies.
Yes. So I'm going to boil this down to the memo that you have that says, as opposed, as compared compared to last year's program of studies, you ha, you will see four new courses added for 2015, 16. And none of them are really, well, only one will be probably a surprise. So AP Studio Art Drawing, AP Studio Art 3D Design. So if you remember, you approved a new AP course in studio art and we've got so many students now in the, in the visual arts that are ready for AP courses that there are going to be two different ones, drawing and 3D design, which is tremendous. So, uh, I have some photos of types of artwork, but I didn't think you would need it because that's something we've been talking about. But I do have, Kelly Arkash of the department had sent over some things that we've seen students do, but I don't think that needs a sell. The third is elective physical education. If you remember, the junior and senior classes take elective PE programs to suit wherever they are developmentally in their wellness. And there is a new elective physical education course in yoga. So that is great for students who want the individual fitness and to achieve lifelong fitness, something that will be of interest. Um, the yoga class was designed after students provided feedback and input to the wellness teachers as to what they were most interested in adding to their choices. So good for our students. The last is an elective physical education program, a course called Warrior Teammate. Warrior Teammate is a collaboration between regular and special education staff which creates a special learning opportunity for both regular and special education students. Students with disabilities and their teammates will work together on their physical education as well as vocational, academic, and social skills. I think this is a terrific proposal from the high school. You know, we have so many students who are interested either in, in education or in supporting their, uh, peers in the high school and they do through so many different ways already. And this is just one more way that they can partner with those students for their own wellness credit and also as role models and mentors to other students in partnership.
That's great.
That's terrific. So there are course descriptions attached for your.
Debbie, you may have said this, but these are all electives for grades 11 and 12.
The two phys ed, yeah, oh, yes, they all are. Even the, yes, you're right. Even the drawing is only open to juniors and seniors.
And the two studio art classes are full year and the.
Yes.
Yoga and Warrior Teammate are semester.
Yes. They're quarter courses with quarter credit and, uh, semester courses. So they don't meet every day, in other words.
Principal Myers-Pacla has not proposed any changes to the program of studies with the exception of these four additions.
That is correct. If you do recall, we were talking about hoping to add a computer science to this course of study. We have spent a lot of time this fall trying to find an actual curriculum that changes and is, and it's really challenging. So there's something coming out shortly from the university that we partnered for the engineering and we're hoping that will meet the need, but it's, it's not out yet for our review. So that seems to be like possibly a good option for us, but we're not sure because they don't have the units out yet. If not that, then it's going to be something else that is not yet on the horizon. So we're working on that and unfortunately for me, since it's my goal to do that for September, we would have had to have that in this course of study now and we don't. So that might take us another year before it's implemented.
So surprising, and I felt this way when you said this last meeting, but it's so surprising to me that there is not good curriculum out there for such a important, timely subject.
I think what it is, is just like the engineering, which we struggle, I know, luckily I found that one, but I think those are two content areas that, that change in real time. And it, there really has to be a professional organization or professionals that develop a curriculum that is live, that can be updated all the time. It's not static, not that anything else is static, but everything else is more static than these two areas. So I think that's the challenge is there really isn't somebody, there are pieces of it out there. There's a, there's a really interesting, um, computer programming curriculum that is entirely based on gaming and it actually has deliverable units and lessons, but it is only gaming. So that is really just a small part and, and we worried a little bit. We actually had a few people that wanted to look at that, myself included, but we're worried that if we offer that as computer science, that it, it gives the impression that that's all computer sciences. So we need, we're looking for a more introduction to computer programming or computer science that includes program, that includes gaming, that includes other things that need to know about computer science. So that's the challenge.
Well, I'm glad you're looking for that and I would just put an asterisk of urgency next to that one. I'm sure you feel it too.
Trying.
Yep. Okay. Any questions for Debbie about the class additions?
I think they're great. I think the AP art is just fantastic and I love the yoga. I think that's awesome and the warrior team, I mean, uh, very impressive, Debbie.
I agree.
It's really going to.
Steve, you good?
Be a great opportunity.
Yes. Motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve, please.
Second.
Well, I'll second it.
All those in favor of the four new courses and the overall 2015, 2016 program of studies?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are on to our vote on the calendar. Um, I think before we take that vote, it might be worth just a quick summary of the discussion to date. And I have a comment or two I want to make as well, but do you want to start?
It's up to you. I will do whatever you like, Mr. Chair. Would you like, you start?
Well, I'll, sir, I'll, I'll start. I put you on the spot. I'll start and if you want to add, you go ahead.
That sounds great.
So I, I think, I think everyone at the table knows and I think a lot of the public knows now that we've been entertaining three different options for the school calendar based on the lateness of Labor Day and where that falls in the, in the September's calendar. Um, and I think we've done a thoughtful job in trying to acquire as many opinions and desires on that calendar as possible. And I, this is one of those topics where on the one hand, we've said publicly that we're glad this is our biggest issue on the table at the moment because it could be far worse. Uh, on the other hand, we know it's a sensitive topic and we won't please everyone. But we are certainly interested as a committee always to do the best toward that that we can. Uh, just in terms of fact reminders, I know that the superintendent recommended the early start from an educational perspective, the benefit of getting students in and prepping them for, uh, the tests that go, goes on as well as the Ober Akademik Program. And I believe the Foxborough Teachers Union felt the same.
They did. And we, we're also worried about avoiding a June 29th end of the school year.
Yeah. And we should just state that for anyone who's wondering, if I can put my hands on it quickly, but we boiled it down to, uh, two of the options initially. The first one would be a more traditional start of September 8th after Labor Day with the possible last school day. Uh, if there is snow, which we can see tonight, there's a good chance of that in this climate. Could the last possible school day could be as late as the 29th of June. So the concern there of course is being into school so late in June, the buildings get hot, the students get distracted, they want to be outside, not in school. Um, but the advantage of course is we get the traditional start and I know that there have been some families who were caught by surprise by this possibility of us starting before Labor Day, which is the second option, starting before Labor Day, uh, beginning on the first, having three school days and then a long weekend so you can still enjoy your Labor Day. I thought that was a nice design, uh, with the final possible last school day being the 24th. So we're still late into the month. We're not quite as late, but we're still late into the month. Um, so that's how I would set the stage just for the vote. Um, do you want to add anything to that or anyone want to add anything to that?
Could I, could I, before the superintendent says anything, just say that I've talked to a lot of people, um, or I've talked to many people who wanted to weigh in on this, to the point where I made a little spreadsheet and had it account and some initials for my own private notation. And, um, the, the biggest, the most outstanding input I got from people that want to have, um, the traditional start, which I, I have to say, I agree with their, what they're talking about, is that the focus is on the, the time with the family. As I understand it though, our job is to do what's best for the academic and the, and the institution. So, um, I'm probably going to have some flat tires on my car after tonight, but I'm, I'm in favor of going, uh, before. Even though it, there's many, a few people that I've talked to that, that really don't want it for both personal reasons and also familial reasons, but I completely agree with their familial reasons. Um, the, the two reasons I'm going to, to ask that we go for a before, an early start date, if you want to call it that, um, is that I, I like that, um, we get, uh, back-to-back-to-back professional development. And I think the input from the, from administrative staff and, and subject matter experts is that, is that a, a three-day professional development schedule is important and good and well-received and provides value for the dollar for the taxpayer as well as a grip of the subject matter for, for the professionals taking professional development. It does keep us away from a long summer, uh, if, if we do get inclement weather or for some other reason, we have to close down and use our, our closed days. And I, I struggled with this. I won't lie. I, I did, but, um, that's, I'm going to go with what we're, I think we're calling option three, which is an early start date. Um, the numbers add up. They're close and there might be people shaking their hand at a TV set right now at home, but I might not have talked to them or they might have gotten, not got to us. But I lined up what came into the central office with, with what I got, as well as the input from the teachers' union and the administrative staff numbers that were collected. And, uh, it, the scale just goes to an early start for me and I'm comfortable voting with that and, and I respect the professional opinion of the administrative staff, uh, on what we want to do, but that's where my headspace is right now.
Thank you, Steve.
And my apologies to the world if I've ticked anybody off, but there it is.
Maybe one of the comments that that reminds me that we can also make that I know you researched, Deb, uh, for this topic was the MIAA start date. Do you want to comment on that?
Yes. So the MIAA sets its start date for, you know, the double sessions and so that everybody has an equal shot. And it'll be August 27th regardless of what calendar you set. So it's so many days before Labor Day. So they've already put out their policy that governs next year and I think it even goes to the year after as to the earliest that any school district can start. So regardless of when students return to school, August 27th is the day designated by MIAA. So that does not matter. Uh, it won't affect it one way or the other. So students returning to school has nothing to do with when those sessions can start. It's how much before Labor Day. So the early start calendar, as we discussed, is, is curiously almost exactly like what happened this year if you take the idea of Labor Day out of the equation. Teachers are coming back with, within one calendar date of when they did this summer in August. Kids are coming back within one calendar day of when they did this year. The only difference is we have to wait a week to get Labor Day. And I think that's what causes, um, I think Steve used the word sentiment, which I like. I think this is definitely a sentiment, you know, people have a sentiment about it. And I know that people talked about the time with the family, but to me, the time with the family is either then or it's at the end of the year. So the students are going to be in school 180 days. We're not adding a week to the school year. So it's almost like take your time now or take your time later and I, I don't think there's a right way. But the calendar itself, except for the fact that Labor Day is late, is almost identical to what happened this year with the August return date for teachers and a September 1st, uh, return date for students. It's just that Labor Day ended up quite late. So I, I get how people feel. I guess I should, I want to apologize too for the dilemma, but it's the calendar, the, the sun and the moon and the stars and the calendar.
Steve, are you going to offer more opinion? Because if you are, I want you to hold just one second.
I will hold.
Okay. So, um, Mrs. Bellinger pointed out to me that we have a challenge with only having four of us here tonight. Um, and she's right. We could end up with a stalemate with two voting one way and two voting another way. I don't know that that's what would happen, but it's a possibility. And the problem with that is this is not something that we can just table. There needs to be a decision made so that Debbie and the school department can move forward with the decisions they have to make. The only way I know to avoid that is for me to not vote. The chair doesn't have to vote by Robert's Rules of Order on, uh, topics. The chair can vote when it helps, um, make a decision, but in, in this case, if my, my voting could potentially result in a stalemate. So I'm going to offer my opinion and then if we want to offer more opinion, I'm happy to entertain more discussion before we get to a motion. And then of course, by Robert's rules, we can have more discussion after the motion. Um, I'm, I'm just going to offer my opinion, uh, which is that initially I was inclined to support the early date as well, support the superintendent, the school, the, the union. Um, I do think it is our job to do what's right and best for the majority of the students academically. But my, my partic, my personal opinion has been swayed by those families who have made plans without knowledge of this firsthand and families who might make plans on the back end in June would be less impacted. They have more time to react than the families who've made plans at the start of the year. So I'm torn too. I'm conflicted as well. Uh, I can see it both ways. If I was to, uh, you know, support those that I've heard the most from, I've certainly heard from more who said they'd prefer a later start. So for what it's worth, that's the input I can put on the table. Mrs. Lord did ask me to also provide an opinion since she can't be here tonight. This is not her vote. She cannot vote. She cannot vote by proxy and she cannot vote by remote participation. We reviewed that again with Mr. Cutler, uh, this morning. Uh, but she did ask that I express her opinion and as an educator, her opinion was go back early because she knows what it's like in late June trying to maintain the students' focus. So for what it's worth, that's more information on the table, just trying to put as much thought on the table as we can.
I don't know if I, I should have added, I, we only heard from about 11 people in central office. So I would say about a little more than half felt one way and a little less than half another, but roughly half and half. And I think the people who feel one way or the other are very passionate. We only heard from about 11 people. So I, I was a little surprised. I expected a resounding stampede of opinion on this issue. And I think while I totally acknowledge the reasons and the passion for one way or the other and no one's wrong and no one's right, um, we didn't hear from a lot of people. So I, I think there just are a lot of people just waiting to find out when the return is, but we didn't hear from as many as I anticipated.
So at this point, at this point, I'll entertain more comments, more discussion or motion, whatever you guys would prefer.
Um, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
So I mean, I think my vote will speak for itself. I did talk about it the last meeting, uh, so I do want to be sensitive to obviously, you know, this issue because it is, um, you know, certainly families have come to discuss it and, and weigh in. Um, I, you know, I, I'm trying to make my decision based on the educational component for the majority of the students. And when I view it that way, then it, it makes it pretty clear for me based on the recommendations from the Teachers Association, from our administrative staff, um, and from the realities of students at the end of the year who are trying to, um, succeed and do well on certain standardized tests and just get as much learning as possible throughout the year, aside from the standardized test, that it, it appears that it makes sense to not go late into the year. So that being said, um, I can certainly appreciate, um, you know, families and their, um, their dates that they've already put into play here, but, um, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Why don't you make a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept. Uh, whoops. Our re, school calendar for 2015 to 2016. Am I correct here? Option three with the earliest return date?
Yes.
So staff will return, uh, August 25th and students return Tuesday before Labor Day.
I'll second.
So we have a second. So now we can have more discussion if anyone wants to have more discussion. Tina?
Um, I'll just, I did want to point out that also with the traditional calendar, we still will have three professional, would have three professional development days. Either calendar is going to give our kids the benefit of the three days before schools.
The middle one wouldn't have done that.
Right. But I think we took that off the table last time. I mean, I know it's in our packets, but, um, the, the post-Labor Day start would provide that. I don't know. I've lost a lot of sleep over this. I really have. There are people that I respect and admire who have vastly different opinions on this and in my heart, I just don't want to start until after Labor Day. I don't, I, I know we have heard that it's educationally advantageous to start after Labor Day, but it is just three days in, in the grand scheme of things. And I think our students are going to get 180 days of an excellent education whichever way we go tonight. So I'm going to vote with my heart tonight.
Yep.
Maybe not my head.
Well, and that reminds me of Mr. Dring's visit last week, just to remind the committee. But, uh, his comment was, while I think he personally favored the later start this year, as I recall, his primary concern was that this not become a tradition that we start before Labor Day.
Yes.
And we did reassure him that was not our intent.
Right.
So I, I again appreciate how much the committee is, uh, is, uh, struggling over this one and it's because our community is, is struggling. I think, um, unfortunately, we have to make a decision and, um, we won't make everyone happy. I think unfortunately, we have to make a decision, and we won't make everyone happy. But, we will do what we think is right, and that's why we're here. So, we have a motion to go with the early start. We have a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Just again, to reiterate, this is for 2015-2016 school calendar year only. Right.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes two to one. Thank you, everybody, for your thought, careful attention.
Can I leave town now? Can I? Excuse.
Two.
You know, I think there might be, I think there might be more work the committee can do. We do know that there are families who did make a decision on the schedule before they knew the schedule, no intended fault of their own. I know Debbie, you've expressed, you know, that there might be some things teachers and staff can do to help those students recover.
Right.
So, I, I think, you know, now that we've made the difficult decision, now maybe we can turn our attention to how we help those families that, that this does impact, and no fault of theirs, no fault of ours, it's just the way the calendar fell, so.
I think as always, because believe it or not, we, as Mrs. McCarthy pointed out, we have due to family plans, there could be special family events that go on all throughout the year. We, we do have students that miss school at various times during the year because of family obligations. So, I would say no different from all those other instances, if this is going to impact you, contact the building principal, do it before the end of the school year if you know for sure, and, or if it's a high school, work with guidance and let them know in advance, and people will take care of whatever's best for your child. But, I think it is a case-by-case basis. So, I, because everybody's circumstances are different and things go on, so.
That rang loud in my ears.
Yes.
On my decision.
Yes.
That there'll be some.
Complete understanding.
That it's not unexpected that there'll be anomalies here and there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We are on to our voter recommendation on our FY16 budget.
Yes, so I'll turn it over to the committee for questions. I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank our budget subcommittee members, which is Katie Adier and Steve Bute for coming in to meet with us to talk about the budget. And I know we, we talked at the last meeting about a conversation with Katie, and we met with Steve last week. So, I hope we answered all your questions as budget, budget subcommittee people, and I hope we've answered the committee's questions here at the table. So, any last questions that you would like to know about the budget? Bill can go over what the options are that he has in the packet. So, if you want to explain that a little bit.
As the committee requested, Katie had brought up at the last meeting, the, the one issue that is under the original budget draft that you saw kind of in, potentially in flux, which is the Chapter One funding of the 50%.
Of a math specialist, which is how we accomplished having two and a half this year instead of two. And Deb brought that to the committee in the beginning of the year when we were able to expend funds to hire that position. The, the question really is whether or not that Chapter One will exist, that additional Chapter One will exist going forward into FY16. And there's no way that I can answer that question for you, and there's no way that I believe anybody at this table can answer the question because it truly is done on demographics and economic conditions of your community, and it is a rating system that the state does as a total. And based on where we happen to fall this year, which is the first time we happen to fall on this side of the line, and we were just, from what we could tell, just over the line, we got the additional funding. So, it's very easy to imagine that we could fall back to the other side of it. So, that being said, what we had done was basically say, you know, we would take the chance that, in, in the first draft of the budget was to take the chance that, worst case, we'd end up with two and a half like we have this year, best case, based on your additional funding of the budget, we'd end up with the full three, one, one math specialist per elementary school. Katie basically asked us to consider doing it based on a guaranteed version of the three. So, what we did do is go back, and your draft, your secondary draft budget does that. The only true way to accomplish it is because the three math specialists were fully accounted for in the original budget. The difference was whether or not the, the Chapter One would, would cover it, was to reduce the Chapter One funding, assuming you're not going to get it. So, we dropped the Chapter One back to the FY15 level, and obviously, if it comes in, it will be, you know, additional funding that's available to the school district at that point, and if it doesn't come in, you have fully funded the three positions. What that means to the budget process and to what we'd be requesting from taxpayers is a $32,642 increase in the budget, tax-funded portion of the budget, which would bring us up to 4.16%, and a total budget of $31,733,077. And you can see that on the very last page of your version two draft that I put out to you. It's highlighted on the very bottom. I kind of drew it out.
Bill, that's still under the preliminary projections that we gave to Town Hall back in early November.
Correct.
So, we're still under the budget number that was projected.
Right.
By 13.
That's important to know, I think.
Yes, very important.
Because when people hear about this addition, they may think it's going to be over what that projection was, so.
Right. Or be a surprise number to the town.
Right.
Which it isn't. It's still under the, the number.
Okay.
So, just to remind the puts and takes, and we've been over this for a few meetings, but FTE changes, one full-time equivalent technology integration specialist addition, one full-time equivalent elementary math specialist, half of which might be funded by Title I. Point four addition, a Hearn music teacher, reduction of one full-time equivalent for Foxborough High School English, and reduction of one full-time equivalent Foxborough High School Math.
Yes, for a total FTE addition of point four. So, we're still roughly even on staffing, roughly, point four.
I think we've been over the budget quite a few times now, but is there any question or discussion?
Just a positive, a positive from my meeting with, with Bill and, and Deb was, I, I was very happy to hear about all the work that went into the analysis and final budget presentation of the sped budget. I know that that requires a lot of effort and time and, and care for the group of students we care very much about, and I, I'm very satisfied with that budget number and appreciate the work that was done by you and the rest of your team. Thanks a lot. That stood out for me the loudest in, in our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Please.
To accept the FY16 budget, do I want to label it as the preliminary?
B version, I guess would be the best way.
The B version?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. Do you need to abstain at, at this point? Are we still in a Robert's Rules of Order tenuous situation?
No, the way that.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
No, good question. I mean, the, the way Robert's Rules read is the chair never has to vote unless the chair wants to vote based on helping make a decision. I was fearful on the last vote that my participating could result in a stalemate.
Okay. Just checking, making sure. Thanks.
So, I think now, I think I'm okay to vote, but.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sir, excuse me.
No, that's okay. Um, so, let's, can you, can you repeat? Did you get my first part?
Accept the FY16 B version budget.
Thank you.
And then if we, maybe we should add the date, and that will clarify.
Okay.
You know what? Let's add the numbers.
Yeah, I was, I was going to do that. You want to add the bottom line number of $31,733,077. So, make sure that bottom line number is included.
Date, January 26, 2015, $31,733,077.
Read it one more time, Debbie Foo, please.
I'm going to say however the motion was worded last year.
Yep.
But, it is, I think Katie's was perfect to vote, to recommend the V, whatever it is, V.
B version, January 26, 2015.
Correct.
For FY16 budget.
For a total of, and then the number that's on the last page in yellow.
$31,733,077.
Thirty-one, seven, three, three, zero, seven, seven. I think you're right, your vote, your, your motion always includes that, the bottom line.
Yes, I think I was to.
Am I right?
Yeah. Yes. Do you have a janitor? Give me one more time.
I'm good.
Okay. Is there a second on Katie's motion?
I will second.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.
I'd just like to add some, that I, it's such a thoughtful and in-depth presentation. So, much work goes into this budget packet, and you start way back in November putting it together. I mean, the principals, all the department heads, Debbie, Bill, it, it is, so much work is, goes into this. And, you know, I have a lot of confidence in the numbers that you give us, so I have no doubt in my mind.
It is a lot of work, but our one-on-one meetings with the budget subcommittee are very helpful.
Yes.
Just to think of things that we haven't thought of before, or, or just perspectives on it, and as well as the discussions here. It is a lot of work. I'm always happy when we end up with a vote because after this, we can take a little breather and get right on to, two weeks from now, or one week from now, we go to advisory committee. So, anyway, I guess it's not a breather. But, it is a lot of work, and.
Well, I appreciate it.
It's worth it. We're very transparent. I think that's what I'm most proud of, is that we can tell you everything that's in the budget and why.
Yes.
And very, in a very transparent fashion.
As well as cooperation with Town Hall.
Oh.
There's a lot of back and forth that a lot of people don't know that you, you and the team go through. It keeps a harmony going.
Yes. No one's, no one's surprised.
Steve and I have looked at many budgets together from our advisory committee days.
That's right.
As liaisons to the school department, so.
Okay. Second to last topic, approval of the FY16 capital improvement plan.
Okay. We aren't going to make any changes to the original draft that you saw. The one I had a concern about potentially was the turf field lighting project. We've gotten a little bit of good news on that side as well in working with another one of the subcontractors for Musco Lighting, who is the group that Scott, Dr. Scott Burns basically had contacted to try to, to secure a discount for the town on it. The project still has to go out to bid, so I just want to be very clear on its, you know, what he's done for us basically is almost assure that there will be at least one low bidder that gives us a very high-quality product, and if someone would like to match or exceed, or, you know, obviously beat that product. And it really would be specked on, the Musco is the standard that almost anybody wants to put in. It's what Atterboro put in just recently. It is the, the highest end, comes with 25-year warranties on everything down to the light bulbs. I mean, it's, it's really what you really want to be as a community, not have to, to maintain it. That said, they gave us a, the local vendor that does their installations of the bases of the things. There's four very large bases. They're three feet in diameter. They go 18 feet into the ground, and then the poles need to be fastened and installed on top of those. I met with the, one of the owners, actually the son and father team that own it, and talked to them, explained what the, the process was here, what, you know, what the, obviously the naming of the field and, and the reason behind that. They came out, they looked at the field, and basically, they made the offer that if it's the Musco Lighting project that moves forward, they would do it for nothing. It's a $35,000 expenditure that would be on our side typically in this process. What that gives us is a little extra room effectively in putting together what's going to have to be a building to have the lighting controls and stuff like that, because obviously we won't have the concession stand. However, I will say if the boosters come together fast enough and actually look like they could put together enough money, I would put that money towards a single structure and try to blend the two together and, and obviously use, you know, that to kind of support that project a little bit as well. So, I'll do what I can, but I know at the minimum, I need a structure to hold the power and all the controls, and it would feed then the, the next building if, if that comes down the road at a later date. So, so I think we have a little leeway, which is nice.
If you're listening at home and you have a relationship to any of the boosters and you're wondering what Bill's talking about, this is totally on me to get the boosters gathered and started. So, if you haven't heard about it, that's right. I will get you going in the next couple of weeks, and so stay tuned.
So, other than that, everything else we're saying in line with.
Take full credit for the non-action.
As I said, the, you know, and Steve kind of delved into this one deeply when we were having our conversation as far as the, the entire CIP process itself. I think I reminded the, the committee last time that we do a five-year CIP. So, there's a series of, of funds that we are looking for over the next five years, so it's no surprise with Randy and, and the, the town side as to what our needs are. Obviously, all the town boards do the exact same thing. So, whether it's the Fire Department, DPW, Police, they all have a, a five-year lookout as far as this all goes. And what we had previously had in the place of where this 165 is, was the continuation of our switch project. And as I told you, what Aaron has been able to do for us between the aggressive discounting he got on all of our switch gear was to, instead of having that be a three-to-four-year project, it ended up being a one-year project with the school committee putting a little bit more money in. Up in the first year, we went from 156 to 168, and it accomplished the entire switching up to the 10-gig switch network. So.
That was amazing.
We were able to drop effectively.
Very efficient use of money.
Yes. We were able to effectively drop 156,000 off of what was going to be on the CIP project just for the switching. So, we're, you know, we're not adding, is the way I'm looking at it. It's not, this is not an additive type thing. This is strictly, you know, almost a, a perfect fit within the confines of what we had kind of thought we were going to do anyways. All of the other things that are on our CIP budget are pretty much standard items that the town has kind of supported in the past. Obviously, the buses, the copiers, the standard replacement of computers. We are working with the town in a new committee that basically represents the town side from the IT side. They will have a similar process to what we have as far as a recycling system because they, they've gotten themselves into the same jam that the schools were in years ago, which was try to come in for a large chunk of money because you weren't doing a regular cycle thing, and it becomes very shocking when you have to do it that way. So, they're also going to kind of have a presentation where they basically will support a fund, obviously not as large as ours because of the amount of computers we have compared to them, but a way of rotating their stuff as well so that everything can kind of be more normalized for the taxpayer rather than these big jumps up and down. So, again, unless there's any particular questions on the, the other items within the CIP, as I said, this would be the only one that is kind of a one-off in, in what we're doing. It is Phase Two of what now looks like it will be about a four-phase process.
Five.
And, yeah, well, and, and again, that's, you know, the turf field already is two years old. The other big advantage of this, this lighting part of it, which actually has a, a revenue stream potentially to it, and that is that we really aren't able to get into men's leagues, women's leagues, and, and adult leagues that want to rent at nights during the spring, summer, and fall because we can't keep the, the hours available on the field itself. Obviously, we're going to use it for our athletics. Youth athletics has a timeframe in which they want to use it. So, really, in order to start to build that pool that we talked about that would replace the turf in the 10-year timeframe, this is the piece that does that. The, the bleachers don't do that for you, the, the track doesn't do that for you, but the lighting does. So, it really is why it's Phase Two of this process.
And that was of great interest to me, was creating a revenue stream, right?
Yes.
And, and again, it is, it is not, in my opinion, not a rush to Phase Two. It's been two ye, there's two years in the rearview mirror on, on the ownership of this townwide-voted, very important asset to the community, you know? So, it's, I appreciate your clarification of the numbers this week when we spoke.
And that was a good conversation because it's, it's a point O. We have to invest a little bit more money, not complete all the surroundings. We have to invest a little bit more money so the town can start making money.
Yes.
On the turf field.
Yes. We need that. Yep.
And that is going to be important because the fields, I think we, we put in a very high-end field. We were very fortunate again with having the supplier wanting to have this particular version out here because we're in central Massachusetts, and they wanted to be able to show it off. The, you know, we've done a good job. I'll say, you know, Kevin does a great job as far as maintaining it, keeping it clean and keeping it groomed. Again, that's critical when you have any of these fields, that you stay on top of them. If you don't, that's, that's the first way you're going to lose them. And so far, the kids and the, you know, everybody using those fields have been very respectful of the field, which is very critical because, you know, the quickest damage happens just by people doing things that they really aren't supposed to be doing on the field. So, if we can keep that up, A, I think we'll have a, a great asset to the community long term, and B, you know, we'll get to the point where, you know, the, the full complex on, the campus side will, will be built. And it may, as, as we've said, it may take, you know, 10 years. Who knows how long it'll take, but you have to do it in pieces. And the other side of that is the, this is 165,000 on basically what cost North Atterboro, or Atterboro, I mean, almost 300,000. So, it's a significant discount to get to where we're going here right now.
Great.
And, you know, I, I would hate to see us pass on something like that from a taxpayers' payer's part of it.
Okay. So, this is consistent with what we've presented at prior meetings?
Yes.
Any other questions or? So, just to summarize, computer software printer upgrades and replacement, quantity 250, integrated security system, funding, which we've talked about in prior meetings, which is exciting in and of itself, two 77-passenger school buses, four copiers, IGO library carpet which is exciting in and of itself, two 77-passenger school buses, four copiers, IGO library carpet and asbestos tile removal, and FHS turf field lighting, full year 16, fiscal year 16 total request, CIP 638,000. Sound right, Bill?
Yes.
Motion to approve as presented?
I'm making a motion to accept the CIP budget as approved.
Second.
As presented, excuse me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, committee. Okay, other matters. Would you like to begin?
I do, I do have something. Just kind of wrote this down, so I have an announcement I have to make. Due to changes in my current living situation, I'm moving out of Foxborough and as a result, I've been informed I can no longer serve on the Foxborough School Committee. I'm so grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the Foxborough School Committee, serve the citizens and students of Foxborough for the past nine years. I want to thank the citizens of Foxborough who have supported me since 2006 when I was first elected to the Foxborough School Committee. You put your faith and trust in me to serve the town of Foxborough and it's really, it's truly been an honor and a privilege to do so. Over the four terms I've served, there have been many changes to the school district and I have had the good fortune to be a part of this change. I've met many, many caring citizens that I otherwise would not have had the opportunity to know during my nine years. Of course, I include my fellow school committee members, Debbie, Tina, Bruce and Steve, the strong leadership team of Debbie, Bill and Amy, an impressive force of administrators, teachers and staff who every day make this district such a special learning environment and who work together to put our students first. I am lucky I have been a part of it, so I wish you all the best and I know Foxborough will continue on its trajectory of greatness. My last official meeting will be next Monday, February 2nd and I will be resigning effective February 6th. So, thank you.
Well, I'll start. I'll start, Katie. Of course, I knew this was coming, you and I had a chance to talk one-on-one. I know this wasn't easy for you.
Yes.
But I think we're all very appreciative of your service.
Thank you.
And I know I especially am because when I came on as the new guy, you were here and helped me and we worked together, I think a couple times as chair, vice-chair and you really did a great job. I know this isn't of your choice, but it's something you need to do.
Yes.
And we will miss you. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, of course, will have something to say. I think, you know, obviously this is, it's a business, it's a business occurrence, but it's, it is an emotional thing because Katie, you know, has served for nine years and has always advocated for the highest quality education possible for all the students. And sometimes when she's come by the office, she's asked me some difficult questions that really made me think, as you all do. And I have always appreciated that in every person and I appreciate that in Katie. She's always had the best interests of kids in mind, she has always been thoughtful and I can honestly say in the seven and a half years that I've been back, she has never once come to me with a personal agenda. Not once. So I think that's really what public service is all about and I think you have really served well for nine years and really represented the community in that way, so I thank you.
Well said.
Can I go next?
Please.
Well, I remember when you came to the Taylor School PTO in 2006 when you were first running for your first seat and my son Jack, who is now a freshman in high school, was a first grader and I was a brand new PTO member and I was so impressed with you then and I said, she's a powerhouse of a lady and I am so glad that I've had the opportunity to work with you on the school committee and I will miss you and your expertise and I will probably call you for advice.
Please do, please do.
I'm so sorry to see you go.
That's very sweet.
And I'm so thankful to you for all of your service.
Such kind words, thank you.
God bless you and your family, we're going to miss you around here. Thank you.
Amy.
And for taking me under your wing when I first started, I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Amy.
I would just like to say that I will deeply miss you as well from both a personal and a professional level. Personal, coming on new, you were so welcoming to the new person coming on board and you made it really easy. And from a professional, I just think about all that you do in your own work and the conversations that we've had when it comes to how we use data and what's so important to think about and really keeping, you know, the focus on what's most important, so both personally and professionally and I hope that you won't be far.
I will not. Thank you, very sweet. Thank you for your kind words. You know, Foxborough's a wonderful town, I have so many great memories and it's been a wonderful experience, can't describe it any other way. So, I've received so much from this experience, so.
Well, and you've given, you've given a lot of yourself to the town and you won't be far.
No, no.
You won't be far.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
See you next week.
Yeah, yes, you will. Yes.
No school tomorrow.
No school tomorrow.
There's a little bit of a snowflake coming in.
A little bit of a snowflake.
Tina, anything?
Um, I did want to mention that our Foxborough High School marching band will be playing on Friday.
Yes, thank you.
At a Super Bowl pep rally at Gillette Stadium.
Awesome. Five to seven PM.
Awesome.
The walkthrough from Mr. Massey about where they're going to be was supposed to